I will call the open meeting into session. We'll go over the agenda at 7:15, community input, 7:05, the LEPC update. At 7:15, here, N-Star Electric is going to talk about a grant of location on Monroe Hill Road. 7:30, appointment of the new town accountant. 7:45, the audit committee presentation. 8:15, approval of payroll changes. 8:30, review of our select board goals for the year. 8:45 appointments, 9 o'clock, the town administrators' report, 9:10 liaison reports, 9:25 approval of minutes and warrants. And our projected adjournment is at 9:30. Any changes or additions to the agenda? Hearing none, I'll ask for community input.
Tim, has everybody been, whatever?
Oh, I need to, actually, we need to identify everybody, don't I?
Yeah, and also, yeah, make sure everybody's been allowed into the meeting.
Yep.
Yes, yeah, the meeting's been opened up.
Okay.
No one waiting.
And I want to introduce the select board members. Put me in there. I'm Alan Lewis, I'm the chair, Barney Arnold, the vice chair, David Modell, the clerk, Kate Reed, member, and Luke Escalillo, member. Good evening, Luke, welcome.
Hey, thanks.
And I'll ask once again, any community input? Hearing none, we'll go to the LEPC update. Chief Fisher. You're muted.
I'm trying to unmute myself. And working with my pad tonight, didn't go as quickly as I'd like. Hey, so, thanks for having me. So, a couple of things from the LEPC front. You know, importantly, our numbers in Carlisle have continued to stay low. Not that we're happy with any cases, but we have not had any new cases since May 17th, which is pretty good stuff. Importantly, the LEPC discussed this morning, oh, we're going to continue doing testing for Carlisle residents. And there was universal support from the LEPC for our fire chief, Chief Sorrows and his group that are doing the testing, that we're going to, we're going to continue to do the testing, he's going to continue to offer it. It's a really good thing for our residents. And the schools expressed appreciation for doing the testing. So, that was one of the major things that came out, was a really robust conversation about that, but everybody was in favor. And to say that the COA has resumed or increased their safe programming would be an understatement. We all got an impressive presentation from COA about what's been going on and what's coming, it's very exciting stuff. Our town administrator, Tim, gave us the good news that we have received the first 275,000 of the next round of COVID funding, that the good part of this is that they don't expire through the 2024, 2026. So, and using Tim's words, we'll have plenty of chances to get this right. And then there's, there's obviously everyone felt the same about that. Schools reported a fantastic, safe graduation last Thursday. And our library is mostly open to the public. They still are doing masks for the young folks coming in. And I think those are kind of the highlights, while there were some things brought up in other categories, I think that's, those are the highs and lows. But several members of LEPC on here, if I've skipped anything, please weigh in.
Good.
Alan, you're muted. Excuse me, Alan, can you unmute yourself?
I gotta hit the right unmute button. I was trying to unmute me on my picture, that doesn't work.
Yeah. We're going to interrupt our regularly scheduled select board meeting. You have a delivery there from your wife, Barbara. And we, we wanted to give you a very, very small token of our great gratitude to you for serving as our chair for this last year. And I'll just start by saying, I've really appreciated the opportunity to be on the board with you. And your calm, steady, persistent leadership has been just terrific for us.
Thank you very much. This is wonderful.
Yeah.
Just in time for a little.
David or Kate or Luke, would you like to say anything?
No, don't do that.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we're just going to, very briefly, Alan, very briefly.
I want to see you wearing that around the neighborhood, that's all I have to say.
Got it. I have to anyway, because I'm looking a little bit like the police.
Okay, yeah.
I want to say that I, I really appreciate what Alan did over this year, that, you know, it was a difficult year, we had a lot of challenges, I know he put a ton of time into the LEPC, as well as his duties as chair of the board. Always, as people said, very calm, doesn't rattle easily, kept the meetings going, kept them on time, which I really appreciate. And did it all in the Zoom environment, which is also, you know, challenging, so. Really, you know, to, to pun the phrase, hats off to you, Alan. You know, for, for guiding us through this period, and, you know, I'll miss that, and that and your sort of dry wit, I will miss.
Yeah, no, I just kind of want to echo the same sort of thing that, excuse me, yeah, it was a tough year. Tough year to, for everybody, but, yeah, to, to lead the board and to really, you know, be one of the leaders of the town through this. You know, it, it takes the right kind of person, the right kind of mentality, the right kind of personality, and, you know, I think you did a phenomenal job. You know, even though you were only on three years, it, I think you have more of an impact, you know, than, than some of the folks that have been on longer years, but, yeah, no, it's, we're going to miss you, we're going to miss you on the board, so. So, thank you, and enjoy the retired life, and that pension that you're going to get, you know.
Oh, that's the big one.
The golden carer shoe for giving you that pension, enjoy it, yeah.
This is Nathan, if I could just say something really quickly. Alan, you know, when, when I, when I saw that you had been nominated, I reached out to you in email, and you were like, I didn't know I was going to be nominated, I'm not sure I want to run. And I just, you know, I applied a little bit of pressure, but I'm just so happy that you did decide to run and, and go with it, and, you know, you really, you really were a tremendous asset to the board of selection, with the select board now.
Thank you very much. You know, this, I have to tell people who are not from New England what a select board is and how it operates. And I'm saying, being chairman of the select board is a lot like being the mayor of a city, except you don't get paid, you don't have any power. And the, but the other nice part about it is, is you are one-fifth of a team. And this board has worked very nicely as a team during all the years I've been on it. Back with Nathan, when you were here, and Kerry was, Kerry Kissinger was here. The people have changed, but the collegial attitude, the self-respect, that mutual respect that people give each other, the amount of work that people put in from week to week, is nothing short of amazing, and very much appreciated. I hope the town appreciates what you all do on a daily basis for this town. And, and that goes, I mean, I know several of you have also participated in the LEPC meetings on a weekly basis. Many other meetings in addition, I think Kate's, Kate had three meetings just this afternoon. So, this is something that, it's a labor of love, it's something that we do out of a sense of obligation. And if we can serve this wonderful town, it's really a privilege to do so. So, thank you very much, and let's continue on with the town's business.
I say one piece from the LEPC, Alan, as a, here, your strong leadership during this pandemic was exceptional. I don't know what, what we have done without you, in, in brief. Your clear experience previously that you brought to the table was, was just an important part of who we all were. And, you know, from your direct service and all the things that you volunteered at, to making every single LEPC meeting over almost two-year period here, exceptional. The only thing I'm really, really happy about, and I got to say this morning, is you always wore the hat as a communication chair of the LEPC before we met like we're meeting now, so I'm really looking forward to seeing you stay with LEPC. I know you said you're considering it, but I hope you do, so, thank you again, from, from all the side, from emergency services, thank you.
Thank you very much, chief. Alrighty. I think we have, is N-Star on?
Do, we need to, oh, I was just, just one important information before N-Star, if they're going to make a presentation, but when we get to the motion, do we have to read the entire motion, or can we just say, as presented in the packet?
Yeah, you, you can refer to it as, as presented in the application.
Okay.
A little bit of time, I, I see the proponent, I don't see anyone from N-Star on the call. I don't know, Mr. Gibson is
Okay.
the proponent. Do you know if the utility is planning on being here, Mr. Gibson?
Hi, everybody, it's Phil Gibson, 85 Monroe Hill Road. I confirmed with them this afternoon that they were in fact planning to be on, so. Not sure what's happened, but it would be unfortunate, obviously, if they did not follow through.
All right, well, we'll leave that open for the moment, if they do come, we'll, we'll take it when they get here.
I'm sorry, maybe I should know this person, but is Kelly Bayer by any chance the, the representative?
She is, no.
No, okay, sorry, Kelly.
She's our next agenda item.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Gotcha. Oh, 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 great, looking forward to talking to you too, Kelly.
Alrighty. The appointment of the town accountant, recognize Kim Kane.
Yep, you're muted, Kim.
I'm muted. Kelly, we went through an interview process to replace Priscilla retiring as town accountant. And we were happy and pleased to offer that position to Kelly Bear. And I'd like to induce Kelly to the select board, she has a background in auditing. So, she's familiar with Munis and auditing, but on a different level, so this will be her first experience as a town accountant, but I'm very excited to work with her, she's got some great energy, and I think she'll be a nice asset to the town.
Thank you, and welcome, Kelly.
Thank you very much.
We are extremely pleased to have you. Priscilla is not an easy
No.
Not an easy person to follow at all. We assume that 75-hour week is not an issue, or you wouldn't have taken the job in the first place?
No, that's not a problem at all.
And, but, if anything you would like to say?
I just want to thank you for giving me the opportunity, I'm, I'm very excited. You know, meeting the selection committee, and, you know, everyone's been wonderful, welcoming, kind, it's, it's an experience, I'm, I'm excited to start with Carlisle, so. Should be fun.
You'll have a shorter commute.
Yes.
Yes. Since I wasn't involved in the hiring process, could you just tell us a little bit about yourself, just for a couple of minutes?
Sure. So, I've been working in, at a municipal audit firm, we do other things as well, but my primary specialty was municipal audits, so I've audited a number of Massachusetts cities, towns, regional school districts, I've worked with the school departments for their reporting. I'm familiar with the town side reporting as well, with DOR, you know, free cash certification, Schedule A. You know, a lot of the, the general ledger reporting, as Kimberly mentioned, I'm not, I've not been a town accountant, but I do have the other side of experience, so I've seen a lot of different areas and different communities and how they operate, and I hope to be able to bring the best of what I've seen to, to help us move forward.
And, and the short commute, where are you, where will you be coming from?
I will be coming from Westford.
Westford, oh, that is short.
Yes, Kate suggested I start biking there, so I'm going to have a couple of months to get geared up for it, but.
Just in time for winter.
And I think Kelly is also going to take some classes, and we're going to get her laptop, so she'll be able to have access to the training in Munis to kind of get herself kind of up to speed, and we will have a crossover time period between her and Priscilla, so it should be a transition.
Priscilla leaves in September?
September, around the middle of September.
Great.
And what time, when do you anticipate starting, Kelly?
I have an August 16th start date.
Great.
It'll be roughly a month, it sounds like, for crossover, so I'll take as much knowledge from her as I can, she'll have all the institutional knowledge, so we'll get as much as we can from her before she retires.
And take a lot of what she says with a grain of salt.
The hope is to get the, you know, be able to kind of close out the year end, which Priscilla's very familiar with, and then Kelly will be able to come right on and start with the new fiscal year, and
Yeah.
merge the two, so it should be very good. We'll miss Priscilla, but we're welcoming Kelly, very.
Yeah, welcome.
Thank you very much.
I was a member of the selection committee, and it's my very great pleasure to move that the select board vote to appoint Ms. Kelly Bear of Westford Mass as a full-time assistant town accountant until the formal retirement of the town accountant, at which time Ms. Bear will be appointed as town accountant, subject to the duties and responsibilities of that position.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll have a roll call vote.
Arnold, aye.
Louis, aye.
What, aye?
Red, aye.
Thank you very much, welcome, Kelly.
Thank you very much.
We are very happy to have you.
Thank you, and congratulations on your retirement as well, we'll be.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, this is, like, like most of my retirements, this one will probably be fraudulent.
We have them tapped for a couple of little jobs.
Goodness, thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Forward to it.
You can take the rest of the night off. Okay, presentation of the audit committee. I guess that's you too, Kim?
I guess it is, I think, I thought Kevin was going to be on, but we have.
Mike Bishop's on the call.
Oh, Mike Bishop's on the call from the audit committee, and do we have a look through, do we have Matt Hunt on?
Well, it's, you know, that was only supposed to be on the agenda at 7:45, do you want to circle back and do the, the electric?
Are they here?
I, I don't see Matt Hunt on, do you, Tim?
No, Kevin Perkins is just getting on now.
Okay, but we need to wait for Matt Hunt, who is the partner with CLA, who will do the exit conference and go over the financials, so. Probably good to go to N-Star first.
I don't know that they've joined the call.
Yeah, I don't think they're going to, because they were on the agenda at, what, 7:15? And it's now 7:35, 7:30, so.
Yeah.
It's not like they had to drive over.
Would, would you like to hear from Mr. Gibson, what the project entails?
Yeah, I mean, I'm not sure that they need to make a big presentation on this, it's fairly straightforward, I think.
Correct, I think, I think. I think, Phil, if you're, if you're available, could you just tell the board a little bit about the project?
Sure, happy to, and appreciate the opportunity. Sadly, this, them not showing has been a little bit typical of the sort of relationship we've had with Eversource for the last 10 months, but. With that said, so, as, as some of you may know, we are constructing a, a new home with a, an attached accessory unit at 85 Monroe Hill Road. And so, the, the proposal from Eversource is to bring power from underneath the street. And so, 85 is, is basically the second house on the left, second lot on the left, as you come off of 225. And so, it's, I think it's a relatively straightforward proposal to just basically trench from the far side of Monroe Hill across to, which is where their, their, you know, sort of main source is, across to a corner of our lot, where we've already, you know, trenched, run conduit, it's been approved and inspected by the town. And link up and, and get power to our house, so, you know, from, from everything that I've heard and seen, relatively standard issue proposal. And so, that's, that's kind of what, what they and we are proposing for, for all of your review.
Thank you, any questions?
Yeah, I do have a question, and do we know whether Gary Davis has been in touch with these folks, and if they're bonded? They're going to be bonding this project, because we've had issues with road repairs down the line, and I, we do have a town policy.
I, I don't know the extent of Gary's conversations with them.
Well, I would, then, when I make this motion, I'd be contingent on, I, I would like to hear a motion contingent on, you know, following of, you know, careful following of town policy in regard to bonding it for, you know, doing construction and within a roadway.
So, Kate, they're they're chopping through the road, and then they have to repair it?
Yeah.
And that's been the issue.
And, and then the town, it has to meet the town standard of the road, I guess, right?
Yeah.
And how do you check that, is there a process?
Well, I mean, you might hire niche engineering or some other engineering firm to make sure that, you know, it's done right, I'm not sure, you know.
Says, all work should be done to the satisfaction of the select board or such officer or officers as, as it may appoint to approve the work.
Wait, is that the bottom?
That's in the motion.
Oh, it is, sorry.
What's that, what's the actual procedure, like, you know, you chop up a road, and we send somebody out there, and they don't like it, then what happens?
Then they have to fix it.
Well, that's why it's bonded, that's why I want it to be bonded, because if you, if it's not to the satisfaction of our engineer or whomever, then we have the money to fix it. If, if they don't, then we, on then gets returned to them if they do the job right.
Is Eversource doing the chopping, or some third party?
It doesn't matter, it's just, you know, somebody's got to bond it.
Who's the somebody?
Well, either Eversource or whomever they, I, I would say it's Eversource, but, you know, and if they get a third party, then they, you know, they might turn around and ask their third party to do it, but I don't really care who posts the bond, I want somebody to post the bond.
That's how much the bond is.
It's usually an amount to, you know, do, that's negotiated, and it's usually an amount that more or less covers the entire job. Doesn't cost them anything, it's just.
It's of safety.
It's of safety things, very, and it is in our policy.
Right.
So, I don't get it, I, I mean, why don't they come with everything ready? Like, why should this even be a discussion, like, you have your plan, you got your bond, you did, and then we approve, right?
Yeah, well, that, we're approving it here.
Well, contingent on like 14 things happen, right? Not a bond, whether they bond, who's the.
There's just one thing. I just want to ensure that it's not just all work should be done to the satisfaction of the select board or such officer as it may appoint to supervise the work, and want it, and, and the proper bonds have been posted.
Right.
Yep.
So, are you moving to amend the language?
I think that's already in the, there's already a existing bylaw, is it a bylaw or just a policy?
It's a, I think it's just a policy, it's an, and it's a public works, the policy, and maybe it's.
I mean, number two says, shall, said shall comply with the requirements of existing bylaws and such as may hereafter be adopted governing the construction and maintenance of conduits and manholes.
Okay.
I think a bond is part of that.
Okay.
All right. If, if you think that, that, that's fine, then, but I just, as I said, we've seen other big projects happen before that were not bonded, and then we had trouble getting.
I think, it doesn't hurt to add bonding specifically to the motion.
I, I would like to see it added.
Solves any ambiguity.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, Kate, you want to just add to number three, a line?
And components to the, to the DPW policy regarding bonding of yeah, the DPW policy.
Okay. You want to make the motion?
Sure, I move the select board votes. The motion as presented on four with the addition of number four at the bottom, adding, and I forgot what I just said, and I hope somebody.
That the appropriate bond is.
That the appropriate bond is. Oh, and, you know, and in accordance with the DPW policy on on bonding roadwork.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Roll call vote?
Arnold, aye.
Louis, aye.
What, aye?
Red, aye.
Thank you. Hopefully, Mr. Gibson, that'll get your project moving, good luck.
Great, thanks, thanks to all of you for the, for the assistance, and look forward to, to meeting most of you.
Thank you.
Good.
When you see them, tell them to come and, you know, finish our panels, our solar panels.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's coming up in the administrators' report, yeah.
Thanks, everybody.
Welcome to Carlisle.
Have a good night, thank you.
Good night. Okay.
Okay, we're ready for the audit committee?
Here.
They should, may it look up to there.
Chairman is here. Yep.
But weren't we having CLA, Tim, to had you not, or was it just, you put us on for us to do the?
I think traditionally, it's the audit committee that makes the report, and we've had, we've had the auditor here on occasion, but I don't think they're coming this year.
I thought you were having them on. I, I didn't talk, I didn't contact him, I thought you directly, I thought the auditor's going to be on, we have not had a meeting ourselves with them, so, Kevin, if you want. We, we, we received a, a clean audit, I think you all got a copy of it, the audit committee has not met separately on it. But we did receive a clean audit, we're closed for FY '20, GAAP financials are done, so. Is it to accept, do you do it to accept the audit then, Tim?
After the board has questions that, they sometimes, that's the vote.
The important statement was, there were no, no material weaknesses found.
Yes. There's always room for improvement, they always.
So, it's immaterial weaknesses that you worry about.
I, I think in the future, with me going forward, we always had the auditor come and actually do a PowerPoint and present, so that you could actually have a better understanding, so I will do note to self that that's what I would like to do going forward, if that's what.
Be great.
Yeah, and when you, when you, as you're making that note, would you also have it presented after the audit committee sees it, talks to the auditor, and makes a recommendation to us, because I would prefer that as well?
And is the management letter done separately?
Usually, management letter is done separately, and I had not seen a full, usually with responses, management letter on that.
So, that's still forthcoming?
I believe it's forthcoming, yes.
So, honestly?
Call and wait till, and have a meeting, I'll get ahold of Matt, and then call the audit committee with it, I don't know how the audit committee feels. It's not how I would normally do an exit conference. I misunderstood, I thought, I thought Tim was coordinating CLA to come, and I pulled the audit committee in, but we have not had a full meeting on the audit with the audit committee.
Would you like to defer this until after the audit committee works?
I think that would be best, I don't know how my audit committee feels, I don't think.
I would propose that we defer this, consideration of this, until after the audit committee has. I would propose that we defer this consideration of this until after the audit committee has a chance to look at the audit.
Yeah.
And, and prepare a recommendation for those.
Received and had chance to look at it, but they have that with CLA.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I'm going to agree. I agree. That makes sense.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, that was quick. We are way ahead of schedule. Uh, I'm looking for anything else here that, I don't think there's anything else here that requires people to show up who aren't already here. Uh, so why don't we go to fiscal twenty-two payroll changes?
Uh, I'll make the motion and then we'll discuss it. Move the select board vote to approve the proposed fiscal twenty-two payroll changes, excluding those employees under contractual arrangements and those union represented employees.
Motion is second. There was, is there discussion?
Yeah, I'm still trying to get to that page.
Yeah, I always have.
Hundred and twenty-nine. It's a hundred and twenty-nine.
Hundred and twenty-nine. Okay, thank you.
When you download it from, um, if you, if you download it from DocuSign, you can document, do them as independent documents and it's really much faster to get to them. That's why I'm.
Yeah, I don't typically download it if I can avoid it.
We Philistine still print it out.
Yeah. Oh, my God.
I don't print out everything, but I, the key elements I do.
Okay, here we are. Uh, so Tim, is there anything noteworthy here that we should be looking at?
Just that, uh, that this reflects the, the two percent non-union, uh, increase. To all, uh, all town positions, uh, exclusive of the unions, obviously. And, uh, so some of the contractual positions are listed, even though the, uh, I think the motion says that they're not, but, uh, really your vote is effective, uh, for the, uh, non-union, non-contractual, uh, folks who would be getting these increases till I first.
If you could, could you explain the, I mean, I understand steps in the union contracts. What do they mean here?
The, uh, I think that, um, individuals who, who would be getting a step, uh, well, everyone gets a step every third year. So you'll see throughout the chart, there are uh, some, some people who are getting that step and the date of that step is their anniversary, uh, their employment anniversary during the year. This really reflects, uh, where people are on the chart currently. Uh, as, as increased the town meeting by that two percent, vote. So this, uh, reflects how that, how that two percent increase, uh, works its way through the, the non-union, uh, employees.
Okay.
So, um, if I understand that correctly, then if I'm looking at the far right column, that is the date that, um, the, the person would be eligible for the next step?
That's correct. Those that are getting a step, uh, this year will be getting it on that date, which is the date of their uh, hiring, uh, with the town.
Okay. And does that lump sum or they, they get that incrementally?
It, no, it, it's, uh, that they simply move up one step on the, on the, uh, salary and wage.
Ah, okay.
It's a, it's a defined amount.
Right.
Per hour. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Further discussion? Hearing none. I'll, uh, have a roll call vote.
I'm sorry, I was still reading for a second there. Um, uh, Arnold, I.
Louis, I.
No, I.
Read I.
Thank you. Okay. David's favorite topic. Goals fiscal twenty-one of the select board. We, uh, a list was passed around, actually several lists were passed around of some of our goals, uh, but, uh, one made it into the packet.
No, actually two of them.
Two of them made it into the packet. You're right. So, I mean, the, the ones, the, the one that came out of the planning session dated August twenty-fifth, uh, are the sorts of, are the, are really the results of that planning session that we held, uh, in the summertime, our last in-person meeting. And, uh, and then we, uh, have a list on the right or as the next page of, uh, specific things to, uh, account for. So why don't we go through that list? We can discuss them, decide whether or not they have been completed. If they have not, to what degree there is a work in progress and where to go from here. So why don't we start with, uh, first of all, any comments on the, on the, the overall, uh, document on the planning session?
The, you mean the twenty, August twenty-fifth?
Yes.
Yeah. My only comment is that those goals were so short-term, it weren't almost even goals. I think the next page was a much more useful.
I think the important part of that, Kate, was the process improvement component.
Absolutely. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, yes, in fact, uh, we really should start that one because the revised personnel by, policy by law, uh, actually got done. And, oh, sorry. Um, and, um, the, um, I am now working on the personnel policy itself. Um, and I have, it's almost finished. You should be getting it. Hopefully, Barney, I sent you a copy of it.
Yes, thank you.
And so hopefully we'll get it in the, the July meeting.
Um, yeah.
With the whole, because I, I, I don't want to leave too much air. You know, we've obviously had a policy issue, um, already in a different department. I would like to get that policy up and running.
Actually, I think all of the process improvement things have pretty much, uh, been accomplished. I mean, we do now circulate the agenda well in advance. The personnel policy by law has been rewritten and, and by and large, not a hundred percent, but by and large, uh, we have gotten, uh, written reports from the boards and committees who requested action from us.
Uh, yes.
Yeah, may it not always be seven days prior, but yes.
Well, it's usually distributed with the agenda.
Right.
Right.
So let's go over to, uh, the, the other list, uh, which are the action items from August twenty-fifth, uh, land use reorganization.
David, you want to?
Well started, right? I think we had a series of meetings with Mark Way and the land use boards, both the professionals and the board members. So I think some stuff is happening. Um, I felt like the tenor of the meetings was good. People seemed to come prepared to embrace the mission of improving and coordinating and, you know, eliminating double work and so forth. I guess, Kate, you, in your mind, is it now being sort of handed off to the town governance committee to finalize or it's not clear to me?
It's not totally, it's certainly the governance committee is a byproduct of the work that was done by the land. So, but how it totally relates, um, I guess I'm not totally sure either.
Right. So we're in a little bit of a limbo. I mean, we, we saw the, um, not saw, I should say, we heard some pushback even on the personnel by law changes. We voted at town meeting where some people or a person said, well, you've got this governance committee. Why are you doing all this stuff? Why don't you let governance do it? So I think in this and some other things, we're going to have to, we, we, the select board will have to continue to decide those things that we just want to finish up and not just leave a big hairy mess for the governance committee. So this would be one of those. I think we should just kind of continue and.
I think so. And, and then the other thing that has happened between when we started and even town meeting is that, um, the planning administrator has retired. So that, you know, now.
He hasn't retired yet. He's announced his retirement.
Yeah, June, uh, eleventh.
Eleventh. Okay, yeah. So. So, um, I think we need to talk to maybe to Madeline about, you know, the new, uh, job description, what she's thinking, because she's the one that initiated this whole thing to start with. So, um, I think we should talk to her about continuing. You know, maybe in parallel and maybe, you know, maybe the governance committee will, I doubt that, you know, well, let's see.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, it might be worth, um, trying to organize a discussion with Madeline and also Wayne, you know, about just what he sees as falling into that committee and what Madeline's thinking.
Is, is Wayne, this is a little bit of a diversion from this particular goal, but is Wayne both selecting the members of the governance committee and the agenda, or he selects and they sort of figure out their own agenda?
No, I think he's leading it, isn't he?
Yeah, but I think he's, I think he's not intending necessarily to, I think he's asking somebody else to really do the, the, the day-to-day chairing of it. Uh, but, uh, he certainly is overseeing it.
Right. So the question of whether, like, say, land use, I mean, I guess I'm undercutting my prior statement. If, if their mandate is to kind of take a fresh look at the organization of town government, they probably should take this over, right?
They, they probably should. My, my, you know, it's always what happens when with government and how slowly we're able to work. Um, but, it would have been nice had we had this, you know, kind of in place, this new organization or structure in place before we looked for a new employee. So now it's awkward. Do we ask the planning board to wait to find their new employee until that structure is established or just do they get the employee and then now we have to, you know, work around that?
Well, there's a job. I mean, so I, I was unaware. I guess I shows I'm not in touch here, but I was unaware that George had already left, but, uh, do they, is there a job rec out for his replacement already?
No, no. And i- in fact, the planning board, uh, is, is hoping to staff it on, on an interim or temporary basis. And perhaps even use a consultant. So they're, they're not in a hurry.
So I think that that, that sounds to me like the right answer, that.
Yeah.
That, that the job description, the recruitment process should not anyway, I mean, as good practice, recruitment should not proceed until there's an agreed on job description, position description. And that shouldn't proceed until there's been some look at the, you know, the work done and forward. So if they're prepared to staff it on the interim basis to get the work done, to me, that's a better outcome. And then let, give that as one of the, we, we should circle back with Wayne, though, to make the point that, that, that has some urgency. That shouldn't be like a one-year project. That should be part of it. You know.
The governance committee.
Front end of what they do.
Yeah, right. Cause we don't want to hold if, if they can, if the land, if the, uh, planning board wants to move ahead, let's say in two or three months from now, we want to make sure they can do that. Yeah.
Right. I mean, in, in all these things, there are, you know, specific things that each, I won't even say it's a board because that may be itself a question, but there's a function of planning that has specific things that need to be done by people who know how to do it. So those very tactical credentials should be part of the job description. But then the organizational piece, uh, you know, is still what would be debated. Is there going to be a planning board and would that person report to the planning board or to the administrator? They should, you know, that's part of what they should tackle early, I guess.
Yeah.
So I, I, I guess my, I mean, we, we should get back to our agenda, but I would be comfortable. I think we should probably have a meeting or a chat with both Madeline and, uh, Wayne on this specific topic, just because it's got some time element to it. Not to, you know, overrun the Wayne's process, just to make sure there's an agreement. Short-term agreement on how to proceed. But getting back to the question of, you know, did we meet the objective? I would say half, you know, I don't think we met it because we didn't finish that, but we started some progress and, you know, it did also not only dovetail into the governance committee, but also into Barney and Kate's work on the personnel by law, right? Didn't that feed into that?
Absolutely did. Absolutely. That's where, um, because, um, we were told by all three boards that the, uh, staff evaluation was very difficult and they weren't always equipped to do it. And, um, and, you know, so we resurrected, you know, a new, the old policy, the old, uh, really the staff evals kind of freshened them up and then also instituted a new, uh, goal setting process that everybody was trained in. Uh, so we're, we're moving forward and all that.
Yeah.
So fifty percent completed and moving forward.
Yeah.
And the insurance advisory committee, um, where does that stand?
Oh, was.
That was the body that made the recommendation to the select board regarding the, the change in the percentage of, uh, the health insurance premiums.
Right.
So I, ideally, they, they meet on an annual basis to review the, uh, the current, uh, uh, plans that the Blue Cross or whomever is going to roll out, uh, to the employees and, and they have various opinions on that. So they are now, they've been reconstituted. So that's now an active town committee that will be devoted to reviewing insurance issues, uh, on an annual basis.
And are they the appropriate group to get the librarian, uh, request for looking at the leave policy?
I, I, I think, actually, I, I think, uh, it would be better handled through a, a, a policy, a change in the personnel policies, which the personnel board could, uh, recommend to this board or this board can, you know, promulgate its own policies, frankly.
There's some big, uh, big dollar amounts attached to that. So I would say personnel board to the PINCOM to us. Possibly in that, that direction.
Right. But a- as, as a board, the, the way the policy changes that the select board votes to institute a new policy or to amend them, as Kate said, she's working on the whole package of the personnel policies. But I think that's, that's the place where, uh, that, that would work better than the insurance advisory committee, because I think they're, they're just going to recommend, you know, various insurance products, a lot, you know, short-term disability or, uh, which we, we have currently. I don't, I don't, yeah, I think it wa- it's more of a policy issue than, uh, uh, insurance at this point.
All right.
But in any case, we've got the, uh, that committee has been rebuilt and is functioning.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, it had, it had really not met for quite a while, primarily because of personnel vacancies. And, uh, once Kim came on, it was reconstituted and immediately took up the, uh, healthcare share.
Right. Okay.
So essentially that's done.
So personnel, so if we're going back on the list, we had land use and then there's personnel policy. I would say that's ninety-eight percent done and I'm ready to bring it to the select board to underscore the changes. There's one change, uh, about what, uh, some military leave, uh, whether we, uh, adopt the state. What's it? MGL thirty-three, section two or some, I don't remember the number, but anyway, um, which is different than our current policy and which maybe have some money attached to it as well. Um, but, and, and then there's a big thing from DOT, which, you know, we had to put in there. So there's, there's a bunch of new policies in there.
Okay. Uh, thank you to Tom Ratliff. He has been thanked. Does everybody know who Tom is and what he does? Keeper of the flag. Keeper of the flag.
Of the flag, yes.
Actually, it came about because he was, he goes right across the street from FRS. And when the group celebrating Indian independence wanted to have their celebration, he made sure that the proper flags were flying for that, so. I did get to meet him at that point and, and thank him for his service. The Highland Committee, that has been done and they have been really active in recent weeks, in recent months. They are meeting either tonight or tomorrow night. And moving forward with great speed, coming with some rather, I think there's a proposal coming forward to the select board from them.
Oh, really?
Yeah, so, so we met before this, yeah, and.
Met tonight?
We met tonight, yeah. Yeah, so I, I'll discuss in my liaison report, but, but yeah, there is a proposal for, we're going to ask for $6,000 to do some preliminary work, you know, basically get cost estimates for residential or for some residential but municipal personnel or municipal offices, that sort of thing. So, yeah, John and Jack, John Ballantyne and Jack Tross, did a lot of negotiating with this one firm and, yeah, they came in at, at about six grand, but anyway, we, we can discuss it later, but yeah, pretty active, so.
Yeah, and kudos to the leadership of that group. They've done a, they've really picked up the glove and ran, and ran with it. It was really well done. After something that had stagnated for years and years and years, yeah. Okay, municipal aggregation.
That's done.
That's done. We are, we are darn near aggregated.
Another one, is it, was it, like, 30 months or something, so?
Yep.
So, yeah, okay.
Evaluation of the contract with Lieutenant Crowe, done. Contract with the fire chief, done. Follow-up on the IT project, done.
Well, okay.
Well, we got the one report.
Yeah, um, oh, that, that, oh, that project.
Well, it's actually, it's actually both, I think, but the other one, we, 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 town meeting approved the money to hire a IT manager, so.
Yeah, this IT project, that was both an IT person for town hall, but also.
Also the infrastructure.
The infrastructure work that RJ has been doing.
So I agree, the, the RJ portion is done and thank you, RJ, for that, but I think defining the scope of the IT person, again, I I'm, I'm worried about layering too much on the governance committee, but you know, how that how that all works is kind of key to. That's a whole nother piece, right? Specking that job and recruiting that person.
Right, and I have to say, the, this, this all kind of goes into the liaison report as well, but the municipal facilities committee, because in the past, we've talked about having more of an umbrella organization, more centralized. I, I know that Tim and Jim have been working on, and the municipal facilities committee has been looking at other towns and how they have, you know, drawn in all their things and many of them actually have IT as part of their, their under that umbrella, and so that would be something that we should also be probably discussing, whether that should go in that org chart. Well, it's, you know, it's, that's what's done in, in some other towns. I was just, I'm not saying that's what we should, I'm just.
Yeah, I don't want, I mean, it's a different conversation, but I would just say, Kate, that maybe the care and feeding of an established network could be considered part of the infrastructure that a MFC would have oversight on, but the real job of getting with the 21st century on IT, like cyber and, you know, fiber and just all these things, that I don't know if that's MFC, that seems like a lot.
No, it's not, okay, well.
I, I don't know, I don't know about that. I would just hold off. I mean, that, that deserves a discussion at the select board. Again, I think we got to figure out with Wayne how this whole thing moves forward, because committee should have sort of a blank sheet of paper to figure out what it wants to do and go off and do it, but we, the select board, have to run the town, and that we don't run it, but we have to make sure the town is running, you know, day-to-day, month-to-month, and so to say, some decisions have to be made. We just need to sort of get a handle on it.
Well, let's just, you know, part of this review is then to set us up at, at a future select.
Yeah, right. No, you're absolutely right. So I mean, we.
We'll, we'll put that on. I mean, this will be something we have to revisit and.
I mean, I think from a general perspective of did we get stuff done, I think, yeah, you know, that was a big thing. I mean, we got, we got, we didn't do it, RJ did it, but we got it done, you know, that, and we managed to convince the town that it's actually worth spending a six-figure salary on, on that position because it's so important. So that piece is good, you know, so say 75%. Well, I guess the project's done, so I guess that goal has been met.
Any others?
Well, I want to circle back on, I'd like to go back up to the first list here. Circulate Board of Selectment Agenda seven days in advance. So I, I guess we'd say we met it, even though it wasn't always seven days, but and, and, you know, that was a good first step, but I, again, in to Barney's point about framing fiscal 22. My view is that it's not just presenting the agenda, it's a double thing where you present the draft agenda. You get comments and you edit the agenda. And that you're pretty hard over on bullet two on that list. You're kind of hard with these boards and committees that they can't be dropping presentations in at the last minute or coming with presentations we haven't seen, or not having a presentation when we think we're going to have one. I mean, that whole piece still in my mind needs a lot of improvement, I just have to say. So I don't give us particularly a great grade on that. I'm not saying we didn't do what we said we would do, but we can do better. I think we can do better to be much more organized and much more focused when we come in on what we want to actually accomplish, like in the meeting. I'll just make that statement. And I'm prepared to help on that, of course.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, the, I mean, one of the things we have done certainly since I've been on the board, is really there's almost very little gets done in the week and a half between the last board meeting and the time the agenda is set out. And if we could get more things done, you know, like, like preparation, you know, accumulating reports from committees who are going to present at the following meeting, that kind of thing, so we have more than three or four days to look at it. I think would be very helpful. Not sure quite how you do that, but it's something.
Well, I mean, I, you know, from my school committee experience, I don't know if they do it still, but what we did when I was there was we'd have what I called, you know, I call it a post-mortem, and then people didn't, we liked that connotation, so we don't use those for that phrase anymore, but there's a meeting after the meeting to kind of review what worked and didn't work and what's coming up, and then out of that comes. And so if we have a Tuesday meeting, that's like Thursday, you know, that's just the chair, maybe the vice chair and the town administrator, it's just a small meeting. And then out of that, maybe, you know, on the following Tuesday, let's say, comes the draft agenda for the upcoming meeting and the requests to the boards that are relevant for whatever they're going to come in. And you kind of gather all those comments and that, that gets finalized, say, the Thursday, you know, of the second week, and then, you know, then you've got your agenda and you go. So it requires a couple extra meetings and it requires tight attention to detail, and, and I have to say, the school board typically only meets monthly, which makes it a lot easier than meeting every other week, but I mean, that's kind of my view and I'm, you know, very interested in discussing that with Barney, you know, just to kind of figure out how, how that might work, Barney and Tim, I should say. But I have a model in my head that, you know, can get a little more, like, an extra loop of feedback prior to coming.
Yeah, I should, I should note, just for the record, that the, you know, when the agenda comes out, that it is in fact a draft agenda, until it's posted. And, and, and people can and have many times made suggested changes.
Yeah, I mean, but it's as simple as, for example, putting it in Word as not PDF, right? Allow people to track changes in a Word document compared with PDF that, yeah, you can comment, but you got to scribble on it, or you got to send it over. You know, it's just little things, but I, I just feel like we got to draw, get the board engaged, engaged more, and maybe it's just me. I, I, you know, I was a freshman on the committee, so I don't want to make I don't want to make it all about me, but, but I, I guess I didn't feel as fully engaged in the process in the off weeks. And it might, you know, again, it might be my fault for not taking it in a more proactive way, but I would look for I would look for more active engagement by everybody. I'd like a comment. And if you don't, by the way, if you don't comment, if you're too busy or you don't have a comment, that's okay. But I would be very not happy if then you come in, and I'm not saying anybody in particular, but a person comes in at the meeting out of left field with this, well, you had a week to figure it out. I mean, I know that at town meeting, you know, the classic thing in town meeting is everybody goes to sleep for 51 weeks of the year, and suddenly they spring to life and they got all kinds of things to say. But that's okay, you know, they're civilians and they're not engaged. That's their time to be engaged. Sometimes it's frustrating, but that's reality for people who aren't engaged in it. But we're elected officials. We shouldn't have that excuse. You know, that's kind of, that's my bias. I'm just kind of putting it out.
Well, this is all good stuff that we should talk about, you know, soon.
Yeah, so people can think about it. No, I agree. It's beyond the scope of today, but I wanted to put it out there for people to think about. Because I would like, you know, again, to have a summer session where we again, face-to-face, maybe with a meal, we can, you know, really have a substantive discussion about that. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Any further discussion on any of these items?
I just want to, just one other thing, and that, above the process improvement, we did have this pare down the liaison assignments, which we did, and that was good, but one thing is that I really wish that I would get the minutes sent to me from the boards. I'm just wondering, I guess I really should just be looking them up, but.
You mean for your own boards that you represent?
Yeah, it would be really nice if, you know, there were some mechanism where we didn't have I'm trying to be lazy here, but I guess I should just be looking them up.
I mean, I think you also probably just have to work that out with the individual committee.
Yes, that's what we're going to have.
Raising too, because, you know, some of them are very well organized and
Be getting their agenda and their minutes.
And I, I get both of those from the COA.
Yeah, so I'm wondering, yeah, okay, so whomever.
I attend all their meetings.
Yeah, well, I would do that if I knew what they were meeting about or, you know, when they were meeting, but very often, you know, as I hear afterwards, I go, oh gee, I wish I'd known about that meeting.
Yeah, it's, you know, actually, yeah. I mean, I'm on the distribution list for, you know, the, the two committees that I've been the liaison to.
Yeah, I guess I didn't get on my distribution list, so I, I will just be better about that next year, but I think we should all try to do that, because I think.
And I think that's a good best practice, is we should make sure that we're, you know, an ex-official member, if you will, of those boards, and we get all those materials, right? That's a fair statement.
Yeah, and we'll have to take another look at the liaison and the, and the committees, because we've added some new ones now, so going forward, yeah, but that's for another time, not today.
All right. Appointments. American Rescue Plan Act. As Tim reported, there's some activity there. Fortunately, it's, it's, there's no quick spend necessary with that money, but we really need to start thinking about what, what kinds of people we need on that committee that's going to at least provide oversight and guidance for the types of things that can be funded through this rather large amount of money.
How much money? A 1.5? So one question on this, I see a big public health element. Shouldn't there be a board of health person in this as well?
Well, again, I think they're going, the resource people are going to be there. I mean, the fire chief, the police chief, I think, I would think the health agent or the, or the chairman of the board of health could, could be one. We're, we're thinking it should not be town employees on the committee.
Yeah, I, I wasn't suggesting that, but I'm just, I'm just seeing Tim, you know, from Tim's memo, the list of.
Yeah, so number six could be a BOA representative.
BOH.
I'm okay.
Or, or unless you get someone from the Bank of America to come. Yeah, I mean, I think those are the kind of things, and it probably should be I mean, the places where we're going to, where we think we're, we're going to spend a lot of money. At least we need, we need to be able to invite people who can give us real information about what's needed there.
So maybe it's even the MFC as well.
School.
Maybe there's a line that just gets added to the, that says, not necessarily add more people to the committee itself, but that, a line below that says, and, you know, committee chairs or staff people will be invited as needed to give input on, you know, requested.
Well, but if you, I mean, maybe, but if, if I see town administrator, town accountant, if we're, if we're going to go with citizens and not professionals, should the, should the board be made up of board, you know, board members? Of representative boards and the administrator and the accountant are, are those people? They're the advisory side. Because the rep, the interests of the citizens are represented presumably by select board finance committee, board of health, MFC, et cetera. It's a thought.
I think, I mean, I really think certainly the finance people who are employees, Kim and the people like that, and finance committee need to be major components of that.
Well, they're going to need to know what's eligible. And actually fill out the paperwork.
There's going to be a lot of detail that's required.
I mean, I don't know, I'm just.
You don't, you don't, you don't want to spin a lot of wheels talking about spending money in places that aren't going to be eligible.
No, right, right. So we need that guidance. Presumably, once you have that guidance, it becomes you know, a rack and stack, and that's, they should, there should be advocacy by those representative groups, I think.
I think Tim's sentence here about that it would be awkward and I would suggest maybe inappropriate for somebody to be a voting member of this group and also strongly advocating for their particular, you know, project to be funded, so in some ways that are.
You take it out completely, ah, interesting, okay, all right.
I'm sorry.
That's a fair statement, no.
Right, so that you just leave the representation as Tim has suggested here and then different boards and committees.
They come and they advocate.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, no, I, I can, I, I can, I can see that. I can see that.
Tim, did you want to add anything, since this is your proposal? Tim, did you want to add anything since this is your, um, proposal?
Uh, well, no, I think you, you, uh. You accurately stated, I, I thought that the. The committee doing the review should be those without a particular horse in the race, so to speak, that.
Yeah.
That the, uh, other department heads, you know, you know, certainly, you know, can and should advocate for their departments or. Uh, needs that they feel are, are appropriate. But I think it, it does create a, you know, kind of an inherent issue with, someone's gonna be voting, you know, for their own project and possibly. Uh, you know, voting against the, uh, competing. Project, when they, they should just be advocating straight up for what the need is, and then the committee. Which is really ju- isn't gonna make the final call. They're gonna recommend to, you know, the select board how the, these funds get spent. So again, it's just another level of review. But I think they're, they'll be putting kind of that comprehensive program together. Uh, and we've got, we've got, literally, we've got a few years to get this right, so we don't wanna. You know, kind of go off willy-nilly and buy this and buy that and then find out. You know, well, you probably shouldn't have done that, or, you know, you should, should have had a better idea. Of, of what it was gonna cost and, and. I guess that was my, my thought. I mean, we can talk about, uh. Uh, the composition. And I think when, when I wrote down the citizen on the committee, I, I, I must admit I had citizen Bill Rizzo in mind. I can't think of a more fair-minded person than Bill. Uh, uh, with more expertise, and, and he's been dealing with this stuff for a year now with Priscilla, but.
But is this gonna keep him away from his air conditioning repair business?
You're gonna keep him busy, yeah, but, uh. But it, it's up to the board, you know, I, I guess that was my philosophy that, uh. You know, uh, there'd be a bit of a separation between those that, that, uh. Uh, didn't have a particular, uh. Project or, you know, program or projects in mind, and those that, that would and could, uh, advocate for, for those.
You know, one of the, one of the, I think, really good things that happened this year was when we, uh. Brought Markway in to help us. Going to the pros. Who know what they're doing, and I'm thinking, you know, where this town is well endowed with. Major corporate executives. Uh, people who really know the big picture, who know management, who know fiscal policy. And we ought to be able to find at least a few of those people to help populate this. You don't need a lot of them. But, uh, there's some, there's some folks out there, I think, which have a trem- who have a tremendous amount of experience and wisdom. Uh, which can be brought to bear on these kinds of issues, and, uh, we ought to take advantage of that.
So are you advocating for two citizen representatives?
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm advocating for all citizen representatives on the committee to be the voting members.
So that means then what happens to town administrator and town, town accountant?
Their resources.
Their resources, so they're not members of the voting committee.
Right. And again, this is, this is a. Group that recommends.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well. Maybe we do need to have the charge, uh, you know, I'm, I'm like what you wrote. Um, Tim, maybe we do need a charge to help us sort through that.
Okay, yeah, that's fair enough.
Because this, this sounds like it's the, like the nub of the.
Okay, I'm happy to do that for next time.
Thank you. Public Safety Building Task Force. Uh, I would like to report that we have not been overwhelmed with volunteers. The people I specifically asked by calling them on the telephone and saying, would you serve, said yes. But when I asked for, you know. The citizens to step up, uh, the response was underwhelming. So I don't have additional people to recommend at this point, and I frankly was a little reluctant on my last meeting to do that anyway, but. The, uh, but I think that's, again, that's a very important committee. It's something that should not linger.
Yeah. Yeah.
And, uh, I mean, it certainly, I mean, it's tied up in master planning, it's tied up in Highland Committee to some degree, and that's, there's a lot of.
I was just gonna say.
Overlap in those things, but, uh, it, it needs to, it needs to get established so that it can at least be on an equal footing.
Yeah. And the Highland, uh, committee wouldn't just roll over and become this?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Yes, I mean, I, I, I don't think so.
No, I don't think so either. It needs to be. So. Where is this on the agenda? Is this part of the goals or we?
No, it's under appointments.
And this is, there is nothing really written under there.
Yeah, we don't have. We have three. So we authorize sort of three committees. One is. The one under Wayne, he's picking his own people, right? And then two of them. We have the transfer station thing and this, right?
Uh, well, we don't have to appoint the transfer station. This is.
Well, do we have to, do we have to, um. Appoint the. Uh, the, 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 the Public Safety Building Committee?
But we don't have enough people yet.
Yeah.
No, but I mean, you're saying we don't have to, like, it's not our purview or?
No, no, it's our purview.
Yeah, it's our charge, yeah.
Yeah.
It is our charge, right?
Yes.
So, you know, I, I guess what that means is we have to, we have to come up with a new. So running, you know, of, of request and the mosquito didn't produce. Uh, any additional volunteers, so we're gonna have to, I think. Come up with another strategy for recruiting people to be part of that group.
We had lots of people for the transfer station, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, and, and didn't we have, I thought we had a couple. How many did we have for public safety?
We had, we have two for public safety at the moment.
Lavery and somebody.
No.
No.
Rizzo and, uh.
Lerman.
Jerry Lerman.
Okay. How many do we want? Five?
I think five would be a good number.
Do we want any representation from? The boards or not?
Well, I mean, they're already, I mean, Jerry Lerman is a representative from.
I don't mean, I, I'm sorry, I should have been more clear. Um, select board or the finance committee?
Well, I, I think, again, I think these are committees who recommend to the select board.
Okay, no, that's fine, I'm just asking. How about the professionals, fire and? How about the chiefs?
Well, their resources.
Okay, all right.
I mean, in the charge, we specifically, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
Show them.
So we need three more interested people. Right, so we take another, you know, take another whack at it.
Yep. All right. Town administrators report.
Okay. Yeah, first item in my report, uh, has to do with the COA's request for a storage shed. For their durable medical equipment. I don't see Joan, uh, on the call, uh, yet, but she, uh. She planned to be here to make, uh. Make her pitch for that. I know that. You have some information in the packet, uh, on, uh. Uh, what the, what the shed would look like and where it would be located.
Yeah, we have a nice tent.
We do have a couple of structures that, uh. Maybe it could be.
Is she gonna put it in the poison IV or in front of it?
Yeah. From those, from those pictures, I couldn't quite tell where that was. Oh, it's.
Yeah, I couldn't tell either.
Um, so, you know. Which makes me worry a little about the, the new proposal for the island buildings, because they don't even want to just store durable, you know. Stuff in there, uh, no, who's gonna wanna live, you know, are we gonna be able to make it livable? But anyway, that's for another day. Um, fourteen thousand for a shed, oh.
That's a Reed's Ferry.
Yeah, it's a Reed's Ferry.
Where we go?
It's going near the town hall.
Some of them are off the parking lot, right?
Yeah, the hill. Adjacent to the parking lot, yeah.
It's been approved by all the appropriate. Committees and boards.
Why is it sprouting forth now and not for town meeting?
Oh, it's, it's, uh, they have the money for it. This does not require town funding.
Oh, okay, so why, why do they need permission to do then, just to?
Well, they just need permission to place something on town property.
Okay, right, thank you.
I don't have a problem with it.
I don't need.
In fact, in fact, it is needed, uh. You know, there's, that, that stuff gets used a lot in this town.
Yeah.
And it would be a convenient place to put it. It would be in a, a, a new shed. Uh, well protected, well weatherproofed. And, uh, I think it's, it's money well spent, especially since it isn't ours.
Great.
Hey, uh, well, uh, my only other question is, is it gonna take parking spots? Uh, up, because, you know, we have limited parking as it is. We've got a trailer parked in there. We've got, you know.
Yeah, I don't think it's planning to be in, in the parking lot itself. You know, just to be off the parking lot.
Right.
Off the parking.
But accessible from it.
Okay.
Yeah, it almost looks like it's in the area where they, excuse me, parked the trailer, right?
Well, that's, I couldn't tell from these.
I couldn't tell, yeah, I couldn't tell from the, uh, pictures where it was, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, because the thing is too, I mean, if you got access and you don't want somebody pulling up and blocking the door, right? Ideally, they park, they put it where the trailer is, and then they park the little van thing, right? So then, if they need to, they move, right? They don't block their own door, right, but. And I think it makes perfect sense to get those. Yeah, and I agree with Alan, especially if we're not paying for it, so.
Yeah.
Tim can figure out where it goes.
Okay.
Alrighty, uh, I think we don't need, we don't.
Hold on that or?
Well, let's do it anyway, just in case. Roll call vote.
Well, you need a.
We need a motion, so one might move that the board approve the, uh, COA storage shed. As, uh, proposed in item one of the town administrators' report.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion, roll call vote.
Arnold, I.
Ask Galilei.
Louis, I.
Or Delai.
Rita.
Thank you very much. Motion passes.
Okay. Uh, second item in my report, there's, there's an email from Glenn Reed and also a couple of photographs of the public art that, uh. Has been installed on the Bruce Freeman rail trail that you authorized, uh, some time ago.
Unfortunately, we didn't get the pictures, or I didn't in any way.
I didn't, I didn't either, no.
Yeah, I got, where did I see them, or maybe?
You got pictures of poison ivy.
I don't know where they, anyway, yeah, I got an email, I think, where I saw them, but.
Yeah, didn't we get them a while ago?
We approved it a while ago.
Yeah.
Yeah, but weren't the pictures in that though?
Yeah, they were.
Yeah.
All right, I'll, we'll, we'll resend those then. Make sure everyone gets a chance to see them. Okay, also, we've got a, uh, another request from the Timbernuck Program. For another program, uh, this summer that would run for six Saturdays in July and August. To, uh, benefit the developmentally disabled adult community that they serve. They asked for the board's permission to. Operate that program this summer.
Um, oh, that's interesting, Tim, so this is. Different from what they've used the Conant land for before, so this is for adults.
Different population.
Yeah. And are they going to, um, I've forgotten, didn't we approve something? For the children's program too? Yeah, okay, so this is in addition to, okay.
So I moved that, um. We approve the use of the Conant property, property for the Timbernuck, uh, Timbernuck Program.
Second.
Motion and seconded, uh, yeah, I mean, they've been pretty good stewards of that. Yeah. They've been very responsible in carrying it out. I think they would probably do the same here.
Yep, and do we have any concerns about, um, I, I, I don't, but just want to raise it that this is Saturdays. Their other, um, programs have been during the week. Weekdays. And is that fine?
You know. Yeah.
Okay. Roll call vote.
Arnold, I.
Louis, I.
Or Delai.
Rita.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number four, there's a draft of a letter to EverSource that comes from, uh. Members of the Energy Task Force. Then they, they, uh. Submit this for the board's review, and they have a suggested list of those that it would be sent to. Uh, in the future, I don't see Bob Doug on the call. He. Uh, indicated that he might, uh, drop into the meeting.
A little early still, though, right? You were on nine. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, although it's, I mean, it's, it's.
I, I read the.
Largely, yeah, it's pretty good.
Yeah, and also, remember, we got of this full report from Bob, um. Was it two select board meetings ago? He went through.
Right.
This whole, um, update, and we heard about the EverSource issues then as well.
Yeah. Yeah. I think it's important that we get the big guns out.
Yep.
Because, uh. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, this is getting ridiculous.
So I, uh, I moved that the parallel select board, uh, authorize. The. Sending of this, uh. Letter to, uh, the mailing list attached. Okay. And I guess we'll have to sign it.
Further discussion?
Yeah, so my question is, we say the select board respectfully requests your intervention. What does that mean, actually? I mean, first. These people have very, like, specific, you know, they have really packed agendas where lots of people are asking them for things. I've always found it's good to be really specific. What do you want them to do?
Well, I think we, they, we want them to put pressure on EverSource to.
What does that mean? I, I understand that.
Contact them.
Contact who? I mean, you know, it's just not, I'm just saying, I mean, I, I write letters, we write letters to our congresspeople and our reps all the time. And we, we found, and we have a lobbyist and everything, so we found it, I'm just being of me as a, for my company. We found it most successful when. You're very specific, like, contact this person and ask them to do this. So there's work that has to get done. If you ask the staffer to do it, it just won't get done. It's just extra work, so I, I don't object to the letter, but. It's kind of half-baked. It's like they should, we should do our homework and figure out. Who's the liaison that we have to contact and. You know, have we enlisted the right staffers for each of these people? Cause it's not gonna go to them personally. It's gonna go to a staffer, and you gotta kind of pre. You know. You gotta prep the staff, basically.
Yeah, well, there's several levers that they could pull. Yeah, you're right. They could, um, contact a certain. Representative of, uh, EverSource, uh, to, um. To accelerate the completion of those projects, but they could also, you know. Threaten them a little.
Well, they can do a lot of things, Kate, but what are they going to do? The staffers are incredibly busy. They get hundreds of requests.
Yeah.
I mean, we can write the letter and make it feel good, but nothing will happen.
My experience with this is, it, it, it goes to the, to a staffer, we get to sign to a staffer. Who then contacts EverSource and says, we got some nasty grams from our constituents. Who are complaining about your inability to complete a project that's been going on for over a year. Would you please? Tell us your plans for completing that project? And that often gets their attention. And it doesn't threaten them, it doesn't do anything like that, but it shows, once you show congressional interest.
Yeah, I mean, if it rises to that level, then that will happen. But I guess my. I guess my advice is that. Bob or whoever's coordinating this. Provide in the letter, these are the people we, you need to contact. You know, get it like where it's really prescriptive, so that when that letter lands at the staffer's desk. All they have to do is.
They know who to call, they know who to. Yeah.
Yeah, although, you know, it's, you also want to leave them some room, because. I mean, let's say, uh, you know, Lori Trahan, somebody in her office actually has a. You know, a, a good working relationship with somebody in, uh. you know, Marky's office, and they decide, you know, jointly that really it's Marky's office.
You know, honestly, Barney, it's not, it's not important enough for even that to happen.
Well, what I was going to suggest is that I think, again, the way I have done this in the past, when I've worked with other organizations, is you would send something like this, and then really the key is for a follow-up call to the staff person, just as you're saying.
Right, but you have to know.
Yeah, and, and I, I mean.
Okay, so, fair enough. So do we know?
So anyway, I would suggest that we, we sign the letter as is, and then we say to Bob Zog and to Lana Zamora, the two key architects of this, that they should do follow-up. And I can tell you that Lana has, is on a first-name basis with the staff people and well, not the DPW's office, but everybody else. So I, I think they can follow up and make sure the right person is, you know, that this, a staff person is assigned to do something about this.
But I think, I think David has a good point. It would be helpful if, when this letter gets sent, the appropriate contact people at EverSource are identified. So that if a staffer wants to do something right away, they can, they can send their form letter, which they're probably going to send to this person, which simply demonstrates they know about it, there's interest in it. But it's, it saves them a whole lot of work of running down who the heck they're supposed to contact, if anybody at all. And if it's a lot of work, they won't do it.
Yeah. That's a good point.
So if we can get that, I, and personally, I mean, I've been working with one of Mike Barrett's staff on a personal, you know, back and forth on a different matter. I'd be happy to also send that letter to them and, you know, say, here, here's something else that we, we can use your help on.
I mean, if, if, if Luna knows, if Lana knows all the staffers.
Yeah.
Names and contacts. She's probably the best person to do it, but there should be a contact for each of the people listed. And you know, there's a lot of people on this list. I'm not sure you want to go to the Senate and all that stuff, but I think it would be good if she had the action on the heels of the letter. And I would not be averse to CCing the letter to the right person at EverSource, like.
Oh, yeah.
Put them on notice that, I mean, if you write the letter and you write it to, um, the way I would do it is I would write the letter, and in the two part of the address, it would be Barrett, Guevara, Trahan, maybe Healy, I would skip the senators.
The big one is DPU.
Yeah, I was.
Yeah, the DPU, right, those, right.
We, when we had trouble with EverSource the last time, where they were not responding to utility outages in our town, a personal phone call from the head of the DPU to EverSource had immediate response.
Right, so that's maybe, well, maybe you should start with that. I mean, why are we, why are we putting out the?
Yeah, I'm not sure sending it to the US Senate.
Why are we, why are we pulling out the howitzer? I mean, maybe that's all we need to do right now.
Yep.
Is contact the right person at DPU and say, hey, and we don't need to tell them who to call at EverSource. They know who to call at EverSource.
Yeah.
They know, they'll tell us. So maybe the first step is we should just write the letter to the DPU. Because honestly, you don't want to waste people's time. These people are busy. We're going to need, you know, we're going to need Trahan and, and Tammy and stuff in the future.
I would, I would, I would send the letter to DPU copying Mike Barrett and Tammy.
Stop there.
Yeah.
Stop there. Right, and just ask the DPU person to contact and say, what's going on? Like, what is going on here?
What do we need to do to get some progress made?
Yeah.
Yeah, and then that's us following up with the cop, with the call to DPU as well.
Right, yep.
Yeah, I mean, does Lana know the person at DPU? Or it sounds like Alan does. Alan doesn't have much to do after today, so maybe he.
I'll be happy to do it. I'm, I'm a good nasty grammar.
I mean, I totally agree. I think DPU is the right place to go.
Yeah.
They actually, they actually control the purse strings of.
Yeah.
Yeah, they, exactly.
So you just, you know, you just cost the community twenty-five grand, which means you cost the Commonwealth twenty-five grand. What are you going to do about that? EverSource.
Yeah. Okay, so.
So I have no problem with the letter, but that would be my recommendation, that it be addressed to DPU with a copy like.
I would support that.
I agree.
Yeah, I think we have consensus?
Yeah.
Okay.
And who's going to be the liaison back to Lana? Is that you, Barney?
Oh, sure, I can do that. I'm the liaison to the Energy Task Force, so.
Okay, great.
I can do that. So are we taking a, a vote to approve the letter? And with the recommendation that it, the, it would be sent to the DPU.
I don't think you have to, you don't have to make a recommendation. You're going to have.
Through with them.
Jen's gonna, Jen's gonna give you, either Jen will do it, or you will do it, is put it on official town letterhead, and you'll address it the way you want, or we will, you know, I mean.
No, we, we just discussed that we're going to address it to DPU. Um, cop, CC, um, my, Barrett.
But I'm saying, I agree with that. What I'm saying is we don't have to make a recommendation. We're just going to do that, right?
Right.
Okay, so I don't even know.
Yeah, I would also. Okay, I would also put Trahan in there because she's our.
You know what? I got to tell you, keep your dry powder. I really.
Well. But it's the same time.
Congressional rep, you really want to, you really want to pull that, you really want to use that?
It's, it's, it's about constituent service, though, David, and she'll let somebody on her staff. She'll have somebody on her staff follow up on it, and that's just helpful, no pressure.
My own feeling is that's the next level. I think, start with DPU.
Yeah, I don't agree. I just don't.
Yep.
All right, well, we don't want to spend long time on this. So we're saying, I'm fine with that. So we're saying it's going to go to the DPU with a CC to Govey and Barrett.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Let's just test. There's a municipality involved.
Okay. And so, um, Jen, I don't mean to put you on the spot here, but I'll just ask, are you, are, is that clear? And you're fine on putting that letter together with our signatures, and then we'll do it through DocuSign? Does that work?
She, she records these meetings. She's not actually in the meeting.
Nope, I'm here.
No, she's there, yeah. Is that okay, Jen?
It is, yes.
Or if you have any questions, you can, we can touch base tomorrow.
Yeah.
All right, great, thank you.
Okay, so do we need a vote that we've?
No, we don't need it.
No, we don't need a vote. It's our, it's our letter.
Right, okay. Excellent.
Mr. Goddard.
Okay. Item number five, town council suggested that the board re-vote your recommendation on the health insurance percentage split because the town meeting vote actually authorized you to, to make a change. So we kind of, we did it in reverse fashion, so he suggested one more vote to kind of get it in the right order. That town meeting authorized you to make a change, and now you're, you're making it.
All right.
Okay, yeah, and, okay, because I actually already made it in our policy book too. Uh, so.
So is there a motion here?
Right at the bottom of the page.
Yeah, I moved.
Number ten.
To section seven A, chapter thirty-two B of the general laws, that in addition to the payment of fifty percent of a premium for contributory group life and health insurance for employees in the service of the town and their dependents, the town shall pay a subsidiary or additional rate of fifty-five percent of the premium, with the employee share decreasing to forty-five percent.
Sounds like we're paying a hundred and five percent.
Yeah, yeah. Um, so I guess, well, I need a second, then we can talk about it.
Second.
All right, so from what I understand, section seven A of chapter thirty-two B mandates fifty percent of the premium. And that, in addition to that fifty percent, we are going to pay an additional, yeah, shouldn't say additional rate. Yeah, it really sounds like we're paying a hundred and ten percent.
Well, a subsidiary must, means instead of, right?
Yeah, it's all legalese to me.
Well, if it's, if it's wrong, we'll let Tom pay it.
Yeah, good luck with that. Um, Tim, did he explain to you why he worded it this way?
That's the language that is in the statute.
Oh, that's the language that's in the seven eight thirty-two B?
That, 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 what, it, all except the fifty-five and the forty-five. I added that, but if that's, if that's imprecise, we can change that. Imprecise. It should be in, it should be in lieu of, not in addition to.
Yes. And yes, not an additional rate of fifty-five percent. It is an additional rate of five percent. Um, with the employee, uh, which.
Language, the language should be parallel.
Yeah.
That in lieu of, in lieu of a split of fifty percent and fifty percent for the town and their, and then employees or whatever, the town shall pay a
A rate of fifty-five.
A rate of fifty-five. It's way too complicated. I would send him back to re-draft.
Yeah.
Send him back to drafting school, because this is really not.
I'd rather not vote this yet until it's, it's right.
Okay.
That's fine.
It's because it's.
And then we have the meeting schedule upcoming. We've got the reorganization of the board, annual appointments, and a goal discussion for the thirteenth so far.
And we just added the, um, the charge for the ARPA committee.
Yes.
That will go in there as well.
Yeah.
All right.
So.
Yeah, if anyone sees any meetings, they know they're not going to be around for, let us know, we can for enough people who are out of town, we can adjust the schedule.
My, well, you know, that's almost, if we have Zoom meetings, you know, out of town, in town, who cares? You know?
Well, we, and, and have we decided?
Question.
Yeah, sorry, we haven't really discussed whether, as a board, going forward, we're going to meet, how we're going to meet.
Right.
Regularly. We're, we're hoping, as I under, at least, I thought, well, no, I guess we just talked about that at the LEPC. So that's not really on our agenda for tonight, but anyway, we should, maybe under the reorganization of the board, we should just remember that we want to include a discussion about whether it's possible to go to regular hybrid meetings with, with the setup similar to the way the school committee's been doing it.
I mean, the school committee, that's just an IT issue about whether you have a better speaker.
Right.
Right, the, the, the question of hybrid meeting is a statutory one, right?
Yes.
Yeah, well, we have April next year.
Right.
No, but, I mean, there's Zoom, but, so we could be in Zoom till April next year, but is hybrid okay? I guess it's okay, right? You just have one.
Well, it always had been. I mean.
Oh, yeah, we had, we've had hybrid meetings.
Okay, so we just continue that. Does the quorum have to be in person? It does not, correct?
It does.
It does.
That's not what. It won't, it won't have to be if it's, if the. Yeah, I don't think that's right.
Oh, if, I mean, during the extension.
Yeah, during the extension I'm talking about.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, during the extension, I don't think the, that quorum does not have to be.
Right, so let's just have it, you know, you can be there or be online, it's fine.
But I would like to, I, I would like to set it up, though, with a better setup so that participants would not have to, people that would like to watch the meetings or participate don't have to do the live streaming, because that is not nearly as accessible. So if we can do something similar to the way the school committee's been operating, I, and it's not going to be terribly costly, I would like to see us do that.
What's different about what they do besides it's a Java speakers?
They bring their laptops in, put them on mute, and get on and dial in to the Zoom meeting, even when they're in person there. And then the speaker is, there's only one speaker for the, all the people, but you, then each one is in their little frame, as you see us here today, but they're in their little frame, all in the same room.
Sitting.
That way you don't need Minute Man Media.
That's right, that's right.
Well, then why not just continue remote if that's what we're going to do? I mean, that seems kind of silly to me.
Because, you know, as we've said, I think, I, I, some, we had discussed this off and on, is that there is some benefit for us seeing each other face to face.
And the public may attend.
And, yeah.
Yeah.
Right, it's a company. But why don't we, let's, let's bring, let's, you know, that's why it's going to be on the agenda for the next meeting. So why don't we hash this out then? And people can be thinking out about it between now and then.
Yeah, I mean, I would, I would be interested in certain meetings being in person. The, the problem I have is engagement. I mean, the reason, why do we have any, why do we want a periodic in-person? It's because we want to engage in that in-person experience. Sitting at your laptop, looking at the other person on the laptop is not.
It's so that the audience can see you.
Who cares? The audience can show up like they did for the past a hundred and fifty years. I mean, honestly, when, we don't have to do it all the time, but when we want to do it, let's do it. I just, I, I don't, I disagree.
Let's have that discussion later.
All right.
Liaison reports. Thank you, Tim.
Okay. We'll go to the Highland thing.
Yes.
Yeah, so, um, I know a couple of you actually got sent this. So John Valentine, sorry, I'm trying to get to the other screen. John Valentine and Jack Tross have been going back and forth with different consultants for a while, and this one, Tochi, I guess, um, you know, John knows him from something.
To CCI?
TO CCI, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay, they're great builders.
Are they? Yeah, and, um, anyway, so they've been going back and forth, and they've negotiated this, they call it a pre-construction services agreement. Essentially, uh, it's, it's, it will be an evaluation of Highland that, um, at the end of it, they will come up with two different options. It'll be a residential option, municipal employees, or a, a municipal office space option. And essentially, there are a couple of ways that they're going to do this, and this is one of the reasons that the cost is lower. So obviously, they'll, they'll evaluate the building, but what they're going to do is they'll base the budget on historic cost data, right? And they'll, part of it is that, obviously, they have to, you know, inflate, if you will, for, you know, current, current pricing. But the idea is to give a, develop and, and put together a preliminary scope of work for each budget. And the, the scope will be defined by each major trade and the outline of assumptions. For each of those trades will be assumed. You know, however, they, um, yeah, they're going to do this, like I said, based on historical information. So the residential piece, for example, you know, the input's going to be, you know, it's like, it's, it's not spec grade, but not, you know, high-end, right? It'll be, say, like Home Depot quality, and, you know, so they'll work with, I, I guess John and Jack are really, they've been the drivers in this whole thing. And the idea would be that they'll develop a couple of proposal, not proposals, um, what's the word I'm looking for? Budgets, yeah, um, or scopes, that, that basically outline what, what the costs would be if we were to go for each of the two routes, right? If we were to pick one or the other. And, you know, obviously, we'd, we'd still have to get bid and all of that stuff, but, but, you know, where we stand right now, we have no idea what any of this would cost. You know, we've heard anywhere from, you know, three or four hundred thousand dollars, you know, up to three million dollars, and, and, right, we, we've got no idea. So that's what, the hope is that that's what this would allow us to actually determine is, you know, what, what does it really seem like the costs are going to be to build this out, and then we can make a, you know, an educated decision as to whether or not, you know, we think either of them are economically feasible. You know, also too, I think, you know, if, from an economic standpoint, they make sense, then John and Jack were saying that the next step would be to get school committee buy-in, right, obviously? Because it is their land, and then, you know, start that process. So, you know, Tim's actually had more conversations with John. I know John's included me in in those emails, and I think Alan, you've been on some of those too. Apparently, there is excess cash in the kitty. So, you know, the hope was that, I know it seems kind of last minute, but the the hope was that we could take funds from this year, some surplus funds from this year and use it to pay for this. Yeah, to pay for this this work. Tim, did I miss anything? Did I? No, I think that's accurate. John John asked me if we possibly could find five or six thousand dollars, which we we could, you know, in in unused capital funds, that's that's not a a big ask, but to do that that level analysis doesn't require bidding because it's under or even quotes, it's under ten thousand. So it's a pretty small amount of money.
Should the school committee be brought in this first? I mean, what if they say no to both? I mean, and you've just spent, regardless of the amount of money, but thousand dollars or five thousand dollars. If the school, if if none of, if neither of these types of proposals are at all considered doable by the school committee, then it's money down the tubes, isn't it?
Yeah, I mean, it's actually not, yeah, that's not a bad idea. So I I mean, I guess so, yeah, the whole, I I guess, yeah, the next piece would probably be engagement with the school committee, yeah, that that does make sense.
To encumber it before.
Right, yeah, you still need to encumber it, but it could be, you know, put the condition on that, yeah, the discussion is had with the school committee before funds are spent, you know, I think I think that makes perfect sense, yeah, why spend the money? Right, yeah, no, it's 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 a good point, nobody was thinking, you know, it's just, it's all, like you said, you know, this committee and especially John and Jack, I mean, they've been, they've been phenomenal with us. You know, the other piece too is Christine Lear is on this committee and and she hasn't raised any concerns or objections. But but still, yeah, you'd want to get the entire committee's buy-in, she obviously, you know, is on the committee but doesn't speak for the committee. But it's really, you know, this only came through, I think we got it sent today from from John.
Yeah, I think you're right.
Yeah, so, you know, it's just it's it's, I I don't think anybody thought that that we would have anything kind of, you know, buy-in of any sort of thing at this time. But but it seems like, yeah, really, you know, the main focus is on residential. And then the the commercial slash industrial, as they say in this, but it's really the, if we were to go to municipal office space. The the five to six thousand is it's five thousand to do the whole thing, right? And to add on the office space because it's, you know, it it's less complex than residential, except, you know, the only other pieces that you need to throw in an elevator. But but that was only an additional thousand dollars, so why not, you know, get that, get that piece done as well with this? So that's why.
There been any conversation if you do residential, how that gets managed? I mean, who manages that property?
Yeah, well, see, so that, I mean, it depends on who you talk to, right? But it depends on, right, it depends on who the employees would be, right? If it's if it's fire department, I think it would have to be a combination of of, you know, fire and, you know, MFC probably. Or, you know, it or do we establish kind of a new group that focuses on, you know, municipal housing, right? Because do you want to limit it just to fire? Do you want to have police available as well? Do you want to have it be for, you know, whoever, right, teachers, right? So like, that's the thing, I don't think you could necessarily restrict it, you know, to one group. But but, you know, you don't necessarily want three different groups, say you got a teacher, you know, two firemen and a cop in there. You want three, three people managing the property, so it's a longer discussion, right? It's a larger discussion, but it's.
Is it for sale or for rent? I mean, it's rental properties are a pain in the duties, you know?
Yeah, so, well, yeah, no, I I think the whole idea is that the rent would be lowered, right? It would be, you know, little A affordable, you know, try to, excuse me, encourage some of these individuals to to work in carla. But, you know, but then those numbers would have to run to see if it's even sustainable, right? Because if it if it isn't, right? So so first step is really to see what it would cost, right? If it's, you know, if it's going to be, you know, five million dollars to renovate, obviously doesn't make sense, right? But if it's, yeah, yeah, but if it's, you know, what if it's a million bucks, then maybe you say, okay, well, you know, let's let's focus on what the next steps might be. But we just, we don't, we don't know any of that right now, so that's that's kind of where this stands, so.
Luke, has there been any discussion about determining the cost to just tear it down? I know, I know that a lot of people on the committee or maybe most of them want to preserve it in some way, shape or form. But I do remember initially when it was established that they were supposed to be looking at all three questions.
Yeah, I I believe there's somewhere that's about three hundred and fifty to four hundred thousand to remove it. And I this might have been in something that minutes from a couple of weeks ago to move it in hot top, it's it's three hundred and fifty to four hundred thousand.
All right.
Because it's, you know, lead paint, asbestos and all of that fun stuff.
Right.
Which you'll have if you make it into residential too.
Yeah, the thing is, you can you can seal though, right? So 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 there are different ways to.
Yeah, okay, I'm just, yeah.
Yeah, no, 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 exactly, right? So I mean, there are certain things that you'd obviously have to remediate, right? But.
Yeah, yeah.
But like the discussion too is you have to bring it up to code, right?
Yeah.
But but, yeah, there's certain things that you can kind of skate on and other things.
Sprinkler it if it's residential and you will if it's, you know, blah, blah, blah.
Right, no, exactly, and, you know, we actually, the sprinkler discussion came up today because, you know, there's an insurance thing too, right? If you if you sprinkler it, then, you know, insurance costs are down and, you know, and and, you know, the school might require sprinklers, obviously, if it's right next to the school. And, you know, so there's, you know, it's all stuff that, you know, discussions have happened, but until, you know, there's any sort of traction with any of this, you know.
I have one more question about it, and that is water and septic.
Yeah.
Is there enough septic? I mean, does it get tied into the wastewater, the school's wastewater sewage? Is it possible to at this point? Because the schools between it and the wastewater.
Yeah. Yeah, no, so so that hasn't necessarily been investigated, but I think that's the hope is that is that we would tie into that we they, whoever does it, would tie into the, you know what I mean? I would tie into the schools, yeah, would tie into the schools.
That's another question we'd have to ask the school.
Right, exactly.
I don't know, no, yeah.
You can ask the Benfield septic people.
Yeah.
We'll tie it in all the way over there. Yeah, so that, you know, I mean, that's the thing.
They need the extra stuff.
Right, no, exactly, they need. Yeah, so that's the thing, that's why this, you know, the initial ask is for the six, so we can even see if it's, you know, even worth having those additional discussions. And, you know, I I honestly, yeah, I I like Alan's suggestion of, you know, getting school committee buy-in to at least explore these options and get some costing. And then, you know, ultimately, if it doesn't go anywhere, it doesn't go anywhere, right? But, you know, if it's cost prohibitive, it's cost prohibitive. And, you know, like Barney said, you know, I think most people on this committee want it saved. But, you know, and so so they'll they'll explore any avenue they can. But but these were the two that really seemed to make the most sense. And really, it's really residential seems to make the most sense. The, like I said, the office space slash municipal office space was just added on because it's only a thousand dollars more and for the evaluation. And obviously, people are going to ask that question, so.
Honestly, if we could get the school committee to subdivide that piece of land off, so it's no longer the schools, it's stupid to have that they own their land, we and we're stuck with the building. And then, at least if you put residential, we could sell the darn thing. But we cannot right now, we can't sell it as it is. And then at least once it's sold, it's their problem, you know, it's the residents' problem, it's not.
Not though, but Kate, Kate, it's it's contiguous with the school, it's right there, you can't.
Well.
I don't see how that's practical. I the school, it's not, it doesn't matter almost whether they have ownership. It's that it's a contiguous building to the playground for crying out loud. They've got to have the authority to say whether they can accept that use or not. I I can't imagine that we can just make it the problem of a purchaser.
No, I see, once they, once they accept that it's okay for residents, then then it's time to make it a a residence that we don't.
Yeah, I mean, maybe as step two, but I mean.
I certainly wasn't debating that part. I'm just saying, in terms of management, long-term management, then it's.
Yeah, we don't want to be right, we've learned from that, we we make crappy landlords, so. But but.
Okay, let's move forward. Any other liaison reports?
Well, do we, so we are not being asked to approve six thousand tonight, you're saying you're going to connect.
We haven't seen, I haven't seen.
With the school committee first and then come back or?
Well, I I think the hope was because we want to, we want funds that are available this year before it it runs out. I mean, I could we could we encumber the funds, Tim, and and then vote on it after? Or no? Well, you you you'd have to have a contractor or vendor. Selected already? So even just the proposal doesn't.
I don't think you can, I don't think you can rush this, it's just got to go its course.
And and just again, to keep peace in the family, you probably ought to notify the finance committee.
Right?
Yeah.
They're pretty upset with us for not notifying on some other stuff.
We haven't, we haven't actually received any kind of proposal, right?
Yeah, so, well, John sent it today.
Yeah.
Yeah, the two, well, I know I was on it.
I got a copy.
Yeah.
Yeah, I didn't.
Yeah, you guys do.
No, I mean, right, so we can't, you know, we got to follow our process. It's fair to say, it's fair to say if we have a specific proposal, which is a step forward, right? Because there's been like lots of things. If this is elevating to where this is the proposal of the committee after evaluating all other potential uses, then it seems to me we ought to have kind of a joint meeting with school committee to figure out if that has any narrative and then frame out what, you know, I guess, what would the work scope be for the consultant to evaluate? Because parking, sewage, safety, whatever else, you know, lots of things, so.
Yeah, but this isn't even that in depth, this is really just, you know, if if we were to turn into residential, what would it cost? If we were to turn into office spaces, what would it cost? Kind of a bare bones, you know, evaluation, right? Without, you know, I mean, they they look at, you know, things like, yeah, tying into the wastewater treatment, because where are you going to put a septic? I mean, you can't, right? Yeah, so so, you know, there are certain restrictions that would have to be in in place, right? And and yeah, so that, I mean, that's what this is, it's not, it's not looking at the full, you know, the full picture of of exactly what, you know, to.
Right, but you're saying like if school said, well, residential, absolutely not. Then you just don't have that piece, right? You just look in the office, I mean, it sounds to me like we're trying to compare maybe two or three things at the most, right? Residential office and the default is hot top, right?
Exactly, yeah, yeah.
So so what if we agreed, Luke, would this work for you if we then that first July meeting, we have this on the agenda and we between now and then, the the school committee is is engaged in a discussion about it and we get a read on their position. And then you have John or Jack or you come back to the board and at our July meeting with a proposal.
Yeah, I mean, you know.
I believe that's too soon. The the school committee has its own reorganization, they're going to have a new member, so. Yeah, I think you got to let them get settled and give them, you got to give them an agenda on their meeting and then come back on that. We, you know, we're not going to, we we've missed the twenty twenty-one deadline anyway, right? So.
Yeah, I think I think now that we've missed that, we should take our time.
Yeah, this is not a rush, we've been, we've had this building for a long time. So let's let's do stepwise, I mean, it should, I'm the liaison, I guess, I'm still the liaison of the school committee unless otherwise notified. So I can certainly take it on to ask the school committee to consider it. But I guess I would need that thing from Lavery or whoever drafted it to take it up with them and say, please.
John, we're talking about John Valentine.
Yeah, John Valentine.
Yeah, Valentine.
Yeah.
That's better.
Yeah, yeah, no, the the main push to do it now was just, you know, not necessarily to rush it, it's more so that, you know, the funds were available and they hoped that, you know, we we could just use existing funds and and it wouldn't be more of a process down the road, you know, if if the funds, essentially, if, you know, if there are funds down the road to do it, I don't, I don't think anybody's in a rush to to have it done tomorrow, it's more so that the funds were available.
If this is something worthwhile to do, we will find the funds.
Yeah, no, exactly, exactly.
So, you know, I I wouldn't worry about the funds. If if we're talking really five thousand, that's not something that we have to worry about too much.
No, exactly, exactly, yeah, no, I think it was just, you know.
Yeah, I, yeah, but let's not, let's not rush it because of that.
No, exactly, no, I I don't disagree, I don't disagree.
Other liaison reports.
Not tonight, Josephine.
Okay. Approval of minutes.
Did we have minutes?
We got minutes, yes.
That's true, hang on.
I move to approve the minutes of the meeting of
May twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth, as written.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the May twenty-fifth meeting. Second. Any additions or corrections? Hearing none, roll call, vote.
Arnold, I.
Oscar, I.
Louis, I.
Mo, I.
Rita.
Thank you.
Now, and then we have the second one, I move of the minutes of June sixth, that 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 was the meeting that we had on the parking, under the solar can canopies and which continued throughout town meeting.
Have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Any additions or corrections? Hearing none, roll call, vote.
Arnold, I.
Oscar, I.
Louis, I.
Mo, I.
Rita.
Thank you. And we have Barney again paid all the people in town from her own a lot of money. And we do appreciate that, Barney. Lot of money there, whoa, okay.
Spender.
Yeah, well, summertime, I guess, we don't have any more school expenses after this week, right? By the way.
As a former teacher, Barney can tell you that paychecks continue.
By the way, very, very nice evaluations on Jim O'Shea. You know, that was very, very well done, and I might unsolicited and say, well, well deserved.
Yeah.
All right. Before we adjourn, I do want to thank all of you for your perseverance and the great courtesy you've shown me over the last three years. I look forward to working in the future and wish you wish you the very, very best. And have a great year coming up. Hopefully, it will be better than the last one.
Yeah, yeah, it's a low bar.
Yeah, and this is a very nice hat.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, we're expecting a picture from the helm of your sailboat.
Oh, there you go, yeah. You know, it's a good hat, it doesn't even have, you know, a
The little fake tab.
Tabs you have to put together, it actually.
Wow, it'll feel even better when you're not wearing the headphones.
There you go. Alrighty, I will accept the motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Second.
All roll call vote.
Arnold, I.
Oscar, I.
Louis, I.
Gratitude to Alan, Mo, I.
And Rita.
Good night, everybody. Thanks so much, yep.
Luke, I'll call you later, you can call me.
Okay.